I am so sorry. Seventh grade. No, that's Guadalupe, right? She's eighth grade. Okay. So, eighth grade, moving on to eighth grade. Guadalupe Rochas, second place Prepared Speech English. Sofia Rodriguez, third place Prepared Speech and third place Extemporaneous Speech English. And Miriam Kacho, second place Prepared Speech Spanish. Okay, moving on to 10th grade. Abraham Vargas Cortez, first place Prepared Speech Spanish. Erin Kacho, second place Prepared Speech Spanish. Anna Rodriguez, first place. Anna Rodriguez Maris, Extemporaneous Spanish. 11th grade, Maralani Monzo Zambrano. First place Prepared Speech Spanish and first place Extemporaneous Speech Spanish. And then finally, our seniors, 12th grade, Karen. Did we miss somebody? And Sophia, eighth grade. Thank you very much. Congratulations to all of you. And if you wouldn't mind just gathering in the foyer right outside here and we'll have a group picture taken. And I appreciate it. Thank you. We haven't before. We probably should. Yep. We're gonna just take a quick little break here and we're gonna have council join in for the photo shoot. Come on, council. Okay, we're gonna call the meeting back to order again. So, that concludes our number five Agenda Item Presentations. Before we move on, though, I wanted to ask Christine if she had any remarks to make about her presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. And our students and all their supporters in the migrant ed program and the parents have left the room. But for our cameras, and I'm sure hopefully they'll catch this video, I just wanted to say just a big congratulations to them. It is an amazing effort that these migrant education students have made to be there, not only just to be at school, but to excel, to be part of a speech program, but also a speech competition and to do well. And there's a couple of big words there that Mayor Brogi put out, extemporaneous. And I believe that means basically off the cuff. So, they were asked questions or asked to put a quick speech together based on a certain topic right off the top of their heads. And they were able to do that. So, that's just really amazing. And I wanted to say something in Spanish to the parents, and hopefully they'll watch this video. Me gustaría felicitar a los padres. Sus hijos han hecho un trabajo excepcional en este concurso de oratoria, en el programa de educación para inmigrantes en general. Nosotros como su edad estamos muy orgullosos de ellos y todos ustedes también deberían estarlo. Su futuro brilla y estoy deseando ver la próxima vez que están, you know, en estas circunstancias. Como estoy seguro de que lo harán. And in English, that is, I'd like to say to the parents, congratulations. Your children have done an exceptional job in the speech competition and in the migrant education program overall. As a city, we are very proud of them, and you should be also. Their futures shine bright, and I'm looking forward to seeing the next time they rise to the occasion, as I'm sure they will. Thank you.
Great words. Thank you so much. Yeah, that was great. Okay, so now moving on to number six, public comments. And this is a time for the public to make comments on any item they choose to that's under the purview of City Council, but not on our agenda this evening. So, I only have two speaker requests for later on on the Agenda, on Agenda Items. No one else cares to speak on anything else. Okay. Then we will move on then to number seven, City Council Reports, Recommendations, and Comments. And I'll turn it over to council.
Mayor, I do have a few. Thank you. First, I wanted to say that it's very nice to be back in council chambers. I've been out for the past two council meetings, traveling for city-related business and professional development as a council member. April 21st to 24th, I attended the National Association of Latino Elected Officials Policy Institute on Tackling the Housing Crisis. Excellent panels and data were presented from elected officials across the country, many from the Southwest, on the housing crisis, how it got to be where it is today across all the states, as well as lots of hands-on tools, examples of pilot projects, public and private partnerships, working with developers, affordable end-market rate, lots of great ideas about local housing trust funds. So, it was overall a really great experience that I am bringing back to the city. May 16th, I'm sorry, May 13th through 16th, I attended the Joint Powers Insurance Authority Conference. It is for third- or four-year elected officials or more. And this aimed to answer the question, aimed to answer this following question. What role does governing body leadership play in managing risk? What are the best practices in managing risk and what are the worst? And what responsibilities do individual council members have in protecting their agency from unwarranted risk? Another great conference, great discussions, and great tools were provided. So, those is where I've been, a little report back. And Councilmember Gorola, if you wanted to add also anything about the hospital. I, okay, I was just, I'll say a couple of things about it and whatever you also you want to add on. So, the Ventura County Healthcare Agency, which is a county agency which oversees the Ventura County Medical Center, our big public medical hospital in Ventura, and Santa Paula Hospital have proposed in their budget to close the Santa Paula Hospital Birthing Unit, the Labor and Delivery Unit, and the Intensive Care Unit, or the ICU. Ten babies a month are being delivered, on average, and the hospital averages 12 admitted patients, though Santa Paula Hospital is licensed for 49 beds. What's happening in a nutshell is despite a really concerted effort by the community, by the hospital, by the county, to make Santa Paula Hospital baby-friendly, promote the birthing unit, bring in midwives and doulas, women are choosing to deliver elsewhere. Birthing rates are going down, and it's not unprecedented. In fact, birthing units are closing across the state. And just last month, the Birthing Neonatal Unit at Simi Valley Adventist Hospital closed. To me, the ICU unit, the intensive care unit, that argument is a bit more unclear to me and even more concerning. The hospital says they have a robust emergency department, but again, without an ICU unit, you know, patients are gonna be transferred to Ventura County Medical Center. And so, that's just more concerning for us. So, I just wanted to see what comments Councilmember Gorola might have to.
Yeah, so I think it was last Thursday we attended that meeting. It was kind of a renewal of what was previously called the Blue Ribbon Committee under the leadership of our county supervisor, Mrs. Long. And it was a concerted community effort in the previous years when, after the hospital had closed back in the early 2000s to reopen the hospital and then to readdress some partial closures in the mid 2010s. And we're kind of back to where it seems like it could potentially be going down that path. There was a lot of information presented about what the plans were. I think the earliest possible timeline that was mentioned at which those changes could happen, based on public notice, would be the end of September, early October, at the earliest. But what I would like to bring up to the council is to consider develop, or just starting out, Blue Ribbon Ad-Hoc Committee to be a part, plugged in in the process. So, if we could maybe consider putting that on the next agenda as we go through the process, because it also included a lot of information about the proposed hospital as part of the Harvest Development down on Hallick Drive on the east end of Santa Paula, which is, I think, gonna be a major portion of the conversation. But I think our representation from the city to that committee would be essential.
Did a member or Supervisor Long or somebody from the Blue Ribbon Committee invite us to participate in that committee?
They did specifically, but she thanked us for being present. And based on the history that I looked up, council had been a part of it, or at least involved in the process. So, whether it's us offering our representation or renewing whatever representation there was in the past, I think it would be, it would be good.
Okay. Yeah, let's make sure that the board of supervisors want council members from the different cities participating on the committee at this point, or if they plan to do that a little bit further down the road. That was kind of my understanding, but if they, if they will take us now, that'd be great.
Yeah, and I think that could be something that maybe staff could look at as we, if we discuss it more at the next, next meeting. Because I think that would be the appropriate way, right, to establish the ad hoc would be at the next meeting? Or could we do it at this meeting?
I think it'd hap, yeah.
Right.
And maybe a couple of options of establishing either an ad hoc or just if a representative, if a representative wants to attend these meetings. But, you know, we could put it on the agenda to discuss.
Yep.
Put it on the agenda to discuss.
Just to discuss.
Yep.
Okay, we'll have to come back with some additional information as far as what the board of supervisors want versus, you know, our own ad hoc. Okay. But are you asking staff to do that, that research, or?
I mean, I can reach out to Supervisor Long, but I think for it to be more complete on the agenda, staff involvement would be, would make sense. For them to contact the office as well.
Okay. If I could, do you have any thoughts on that? Do you have any thoughts on that as far as?
I'll reach out to Supervisor.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And just one more thing, Mayor, if you don't mind, if I can say for the general public, for those that are watching, for community members who are hearing this and may be concerned or just want to find out more information about this, there are different things happening. So, along with this, there's a Blue Ribbon Task Force, as Councilmember Gorola, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Gorola stated. There is also a couple of other community groups. So, there's Santa Clara Valley Together, Santa Paula Latino Town Hall, and I think they're talking about it. They were at the meeting, they're planning. So, this is just for the community in general, if you want to get in contact with those organizations to learn more. Also, the next Board of Supervisors meeting is, I don't want to say it wrong, I think it was Tuesday, June 4th. And I think that might be on the agenda, and they will be talking about it under the Budget Item. Just want to let folks know.
Okay, great. Anything more from anybody?
I would like to just briefly recognize the Fillmore, Piru, BFW, the Barzil Cemetery, the Fillmore Troop 406 Boy Scouts, who, and anyone else who participated, Ernie Vegas, who was the guest speaker, who did a, presented a very moving Memorial Day ceremony yesterday at the Barzil Cemetery. It is something that I think. I'll pause. Sorry. It's okay. I wasn't sure if somebody had actually fallen. Okay. Just that we do make sure that we focus in our community, but especially parents, who are our first educators, the importance of understanding what holidays really represent, not just a day off to go have fun, but a day off maybe to have fun, to have a toast to those who the holiday is given for. I learned very early on in my life, and these words are my own and do not represent those of the United States Military, the Air Force, or the California National Guard. But I memorized a long time ago, but I'm gonna read it from script today, so I don't mess it up. A quote from Father Dennis O'Brien. It reads, "It is the soldier, not the reporter, who has given us the freedom of the press. It is the soldier, not the poet, who has given us the freedom of speech. It is the soldier, not the campus organizer, who has given us the freedom to demonstrate. It is the soldier who salutes the flag, who serves under the flag, and whose coffin is draped by the flag, who allows the protester to burn the flag." Those words have stuck with me throughout the majority of my life at this point, since I had to learn it, mostly because Memorial Day is often confused as just a day to salute your service members or veterans. And there's a place for that, but most importantly, it's a day to honor the fallen. Thanks be to God that there were not any recent deaths that are killed in action that were recited at the Barzil Cemetery from the Fillmore community in recent wars, Operation Iraqi Freedom or Enduring Freedom. But I do have a friend who died in 2009, who was a mentor of mine as a cadet. His name is, he died as First Lieutenant Joseph D. Hilton, Jr. He died September 8th, 2009 during Operation Iraqi Freedom. He was from, he died at the age of 24 of Monroe, Georgia. He was assigned to the Sixth Security Forces Squadron, McDill Air Force Base, Florida. He died on September 8th near Baghdad of wounds sustained when enemy forces attacked his vehicle with an improvised explosive device. He was our First Sergeant as a cadet, which if anybody's familiar with what that means in the military, it's basically the go-to guy, the guy you take your problems to, to try to figure out what's going on. He's somebody you can talk to, somebody who knows their duty better than anyone else, who leadership can trust. And I'd just like to take this moment to honor his name and also thank God that there's nobody from Fillmore who I know who has died recently in combat. So, a moment of silence, please. Thank you. And I ask that you consider next week as the anniversary of D-Day, World War II, the storming of the Beach of Normandy. Maybe do a little research and find someone you can share that memory with. Thanks for doing that, Chris.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
So bringing words there. Okay. Other council members, anything on council reports, recommendations, comments? All right. Then we move on to the Consent Calendar. I have a motion to approve the Consent Calendar.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, Consent Calendar is approved. Moving down to number, new business, 9A Authorization. I'm sorry, well, before I start, would somebody consider closing those way back doors back for me, just so I can get? It's not even the sound, it's the glare that's getting to me now. Thank you so much. Authorization for the Acceptance of FEMA Grant for Automatic Chest Compression Devices and Authorization Purchase of Devices with Grant Funding. FEMA Grant for Automatic Chest Compression Devices. Turn it over to our Fire Department.
Oh, good morning, or good afternoon, good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilstaff, and public. My name is Mike Salazar. I hold the rank of Captain at the Fillmore Fire Department, and I'm here to request the authorization for FEMA Grant for our Automatic Chest Compression Device, which we know as the Lucas. So, a little brief on it. Fillmore Fire Department goes into a regional grant with the other major fire departments. Every year, they kind of pick what they most think they need in the field to provide the best care for the public. This year was the Lucas Device. So, the Lucas Device, we were gonna use it for people who we find in cardiac arrest, who are pulseless and apneic or not breathing. The Lucas Device has been shown to have positive patient outcomes and reduce firefighter fatigue. So, currently, in the policies we hold right now, if we find someone in cardiac arrest, we're on scene anywhere from 20 to 40 minutes working these patients up on scene. The longest arrest in Fillmore has been an hour and a half that we've been on scene doing compressions. Currently, Ventura County Rescue Engine 27 has a Lucas Device. So, we typically call them in to assist and bring that device to help reduce our fatigue. So, with cardiac arrests, we typically run a three-man engine. So, that's us pretty much rotating in and out, plus the paramedic delivering drugs, taking care of the airway. So, this device would greatly free up our hands and keep resources available for the community during these calls. The grant portion that we got awarded was $54,495. That's gonna get us three Lucas Devices. So, we're planning to put one on our primary engine, our backup engine, and then we have one in case something fails. We have one in spare. There is annual maintenance, and we need to set up a rotation for these devices, so we always have two available for the public. We have to match 10%, so our portion from the city budget would be $5,449.50. The grant has already been awarded to the county and us. It's already allocated, so we just need the okay to pull the funds, and the funds will come out of the Fire Department budget. Thank you.
Okay. Questions for Captain Salazar?
I was gonna say, it's gonna be good to have him here, huh?
Yeah, especially with Santa Paula kind of dialing down.
Yeah, I think this is well-spent money.
Okay, so then I guess we'll move right into a motion.
I just was wondering if you could maybe give a brief description of just how the device actually works for? I mean, obviously, it's a manual.
Yeah, I believe you guys have a.
Not quite an AED.
Huh?
Not quite an AED.
Not an AED. AED provides electrical conductivity to restart the heart. I believe you have a photo of the Lucas Device. So, pretty much it's a backplate that goes around the patient, and it has this big plunger device that be positioned over their chest. It measures the death compression, so we need to have about two and a half inches to be effective. This device hits that mark every time. We currently do right now manual CPR. We have to maintain about 112 beats a minute, so that's pretty fatiguing. So, this device will take care of that. It's got a battery of about 30 minutes, 40 minutes of a battery life. We have extra batteries. So, that's kind of the general overview of it.
Okay. I will entertain a motion. Go ahead, Albert.
I move that City Council approve the acceptance of the FEMA Fiscal Year 2022 assistance to firefighters grant AFG for Automatic Chest Compression Devices. Authorize the city manager or designee to execute any agreements or documents necessary for securing the grant and authorize the city manager or designee to carry out purchase of the devices and execute any agreements or purchase orders necessary to do so.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? There will be a new device in the Fire Department. Thank you very much, Captain.
Thank you, council. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number 9B. Consideration of an Ordinance to amend Chapter 7.10 Yard and Garage Sales Regarding the Frequency of Garage and Yard Sales Allowed in a Month or Year and Adoption of Exemption from SEQA. Turn it over to staff.
Good evening, council, Fillmore residents. My name is Edy Vinegas, and I am a deputy city clerk. And as you mentioned, Mayor, this is a consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter 7.10 of the Yard Cell and Garage Sales regarding the frequency of the amount of times allowed in a month and year and adoption of exemption from SEQA. City staffs requested the City Council approve the first reading to the Ordinance Number 24-973 to update the Fillmore Municipal Code to amend one subsection of Chapter 7.10 regarding the Yard Cell, Yard and Garage Cell Signs. After receiving complaints about the number of garage and yard cell signs that were not being removed after the cells and reviewing the existing language regarding such signs in the code, on May 14th, 2024, the staff requested that the City Council provide direction to staff on whether or not to prepare an ordinance amending the code to clarify the amount of times in which it is allowed. Currently, the code states that no more than four garage cells should be conducted on any premises by the same residents in any calendar year, and no single cell should be conducted for longer than two consecutive weekends or 72 hours, whatever is a shorter period, and the cells may be conducted during daylight hours only. Staff recommendation is to, was to clarify this language and revising it to instead specify that the yard cells not be conducted more than two times per month and no more than four times per year. than four times per year. And so we are here today to make that proposed amendment for that code. That concludes, also, sorry, just wanted to also mention that there is a $15 fee for the permit as well. And that concludes my staff report, and I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, turn it over to council. Any questions for staff?
I know part of the discussion from the last meeting was about the education piece. When would the staff be ready to start sending out information about the updates?
Yes, so if this were to come through, I believe we would have to do the second reading of this one, of the code amendment, and then sometime in August, we can go ahead and start the educational portion, which is a good time since it's summer, peak of summer season.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else?
I'm missing you.
I'm so glad Mark is sitting next to me. Okay, yes, Brandy Hollis. I'm surprised you weren't waving at me.
I'm surprised she wasn't screaming at you.
That's not nice. All right. Good evening, council members. I just wanted to let you guys know that during the last council meeting, when there was a lot of discussion about the yard sale signs, I was sitting there thinking to myself that, you know, maybe that there's a way to go digital. I know in San Clarita, they definitely have a website that is dedicated just to San Clarita yard sales. So in the spirit of sitting here during a really long council meeting, I set up a Fillmore yard sale page and made some really good administrators that can be in charge of it. So far, we've had really great feedback. I think we drove around on Saturday and found one yard sale without signs and having a yard sale purely based on the website, but one's better than none, and definitely a few hundred members, I think, by the end of the night. So it's definitely an option to go digital instead of putting all these other ordinances in place and maybe really push the digital thing. I don't know if it'll work in Fillmore. It's Fillmore, so there's always special needs, but there is a page that's currently set up, and I really thought too also, like, what if the city had a link for the yard sales, but the public in general doesn't seem to go on the city site for everything anyway, so I didn't think that was really a good option. But just something to think about in the digital age and, you know, reduce waste and paper and everything else, so just an idea. But it's already established and it's out there, so it's Fillmore yard sales, so.
I'd like to, I'd like to thank you for making Albert and I the, probably the first two members.
You're welcome. That's what happens when there's so much discussion about yard sales. So I was like, wait, I have an idea. I'm just going to sit right here and not say anything and.
Okay. Thanks for that input. We appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, seeing that I have no additional speaker cards in this agenda item, we will, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, Mayor, I will, I'll move that the City Council conduct a first reading of ordinance number 24-973, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fillmore, California, amending Fillmore Municipal Code Section 7.10.0201, the limitation on garage sales and yard sales and adoption of exemption from SEQA.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? This agenda item passes. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number 9B. And this is ordinance 24-972, amending 2302 to update the city's requirements for self-storage and recreational vehicle storage facilities in the city and finding of exemption from SEQA. And I'll turn it over to staff.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is ordinance 24-972. This is the second reading. You had the first reading at the May 14th hearing, and there were changes made to the ordinance at that time. So reflected in your packet tonight is Attachment 1, which is the ordinance, including the changes and revisions that were adopted at the first reading. And Attachment 2 includes, includes that ordinance language as it existed at the first reading. And at your dais tonight was a revision, there was a typo or two in Section 9J of Attachment 2, which was the, the ordinance of the first reading. So tonight, if you adopt the ordinance, it will take effect on June, it will take effect June 26th. I'm going to put up a brief table that will show you the changes that occurred between the first reading and the second reading. So on the left, on the left is the existing ordinance, is the existing regulations as they occur today. That's the municipal, municipal code without any changes. In the center shows what the planning commission had changed, their recommendations, and then on the right shows the changes that have occurred through the City Council hearing. So at City Council, I believe it was in January, you had reduced the eight-foot masonry wall requirement down to six feet, except for those areas that are adjacent to sensitive uses. At the last, at the first reading, last hearing of the revised ordinance, you had eliminated the requirement for paving for RV and self-storage, and you had, by de facto, had eliminated the planning commission establishment of one self-storage within 1,000 square feet. Because of the revised ordinance, that became a moot point, because there's a gap between ordinances that allow for that one applicant to submit an application, because the, the moratorium is not in effect at this point. So applications for RV and self-storage can be submitted right now for the next 28 days. And then finally, the restriction for new or expanded RV storage within 500 feet of SR 126 was removed at the first reading. So that's, again, that's reflected in Attachment 1. I can leave this up, but that basically concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, turn it over to council for questions for staff.
Thank you, thank you for your presentation. A question regarding pavement, and I know that it's listed out in the ordinance, the changes and sort of, I guess we call it the qualifiers for it, and it seemed to be a little, to me, really extensive of what would need to be done in lieu of, including ADA requirements that would need to happen with gravel or some sort of gravel. Can you go into more detail about that and what that could be in terms of risk or liability?
Yeah, so the reason we don't have, the reason we require paving or asphalt is because it takes, it's a, it takes care of all those performance standards. So the qualitative performance standards that you would still have to meet regardless of what our ordinance says, because these are based on state law, Air Police and Control District, America's with Disability Act requirements, those things don't, aren't eliminated by this ordinance, so you would have to prove that you can still meet those standards. Those standards would require you to not be a nuisance to the neighbors, it would require you to not have fugitive dust, that's all regulated by Air Police and Control District. When it comes to America's with Disability Act, the ADA compliance, so again, that's a performance standard, so you would have to meet a certain grade, and it would also have to allow for, you know, wheelchairs to roll across, and it couldn't allow for weathering to cause unevenness in those surfaces. So if you can maintain, let's say gravel or decomposed granite to the extent that you can, you can maintain that, that surface to be very flat, meet the grade, not have weather erosion, prohibit access, you can do that. It just takes a long ti, it takes a lot of maintenance, but it's, you would have to perform to the ADA standard, and that's subject to inspection. So as you may know, folks go out, and the city gets hit pretty hard along the highway for businesses that don't meet ADA compliance. So there are folks that go around, they literally go around with rulers, and, and they know that, they know the performance standard a lot of times better than staff does, so. All of those things are baked into the ordinance so that anybody who's applying to do this and they want to do something other than pavement, they have to know that they're going to have to do a significant amount of maintenance for the long term, and there'll be a lot of regulatory agencies that would do enforcement, including ADA. So if they can, like I said, if it's gravel and they want to keep the gravel compact at all times to meet those standards, it can be done, sure, but it's a lot of work.
And a follow-up question to that, too, is for our potential other RV, well, actually, no, an applicant that is already in the process of, does this change for that applicant as well in terms of eliminating, if we were to let go of the pavement requirement, eliminate it for those that are basically still in the construction process?
Okay, so if a new, so if an application exists today, like the RV storage is under construction now today on Highway 126, if you're eliminating the pavement there, yeah, I mean, there's, they should still be on notice that you're going to have to require with ADA, you have to comply with ADA access, fugitive dust, nuisance issues, weathering, erosion, water quality, all of those things are in effect no matter what. So if they're not aware of that, you know, by putting it in here, that makes that person aware that you can choose not to do paving, but here's all the performance standards you're going to have to meet. And when you propose a project that has some other type of surface, Roxanne over here at engineering is going to be reviewing that to make sure you meet those performance standards. That's, those are the things that we're going, that staff or other enforcement agencies are going to look for. So they could, they could eliminate it, or if you wanted to apply, how would that work, Tiffany?
Yeah, they would have to apply for a modification of their conditions of approval. Right now, they can only build pursuant to the conditions of approval that have been approved.
That they were given.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And that one in particular has a modification, they've submitted already.
In this, on this area? In this, on this issue?
No, they have a, they have one, they have an application.
They have something.
Yeah, but not that issue.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions, comments?
I vaguely, I don't remember entirely pavement being not required when we were talking, discussing it last time. I meant, I know we talked about gravel, but we were talking about under facilities that did not leak oil, correct?
That was, yeah, and I think, I thought I had read in here that it was for motorized vehicles, or maybe I misread that, Brian, the requirement for pavement.
Well, regardless whether it's for motorized, you know.
Yeah, it still has to meet the design standards.
But my, if they use something other than the pavement and has to be ADA, in my thinking, that's going to put a burden on more, a greater burden on staff. I mean, how would, how would it be, is someone from staff going to go out there and check it periodically, or is there somebody from the county level that comes out and checks it periodically? I mean, or is it complaint-driven?
Realistically speaking, it's complaint-driven. So typically, the way these complaints come up is there's dust, maybe there's neighbors that get dust on their car or on their house over time, and they see dust clouds coming up from, you know, some sort of unpaved areas. And then that, and then that complaint goes to the Air Police and Control District, and they have local enforcement folks who come out and take a look at it. As far as everything else, you know, hydrology, water quality, yes, we would look at, engineering would look at, and our staff, we probably wouldn't go out there unless we got a complaint for the same reasons.
Right.
Then we would look to see if they're in compliance with their conditions of approval as well. Other things we would look at would be if surface runoff, stormwater runoff is carrying sediment off-site onto the street, those kinds of things. Those generate complaints.
Okay, so going back, Chris, to your question, or your, you were reading your notes. Yeah, what was, was it?
He was talking about gravel, and he talked about gravel, like you said, the back, the back lot here, it's a dirt lot, we could be gravel on it, but it wasn't entirely, it was, from my recollection, it was pertaining to non-motorized trailers or, you know, such. It didn't, it didn't pertain to motorized, where oil would leak and such, such stuff. Is that correct? Am I dreaming or?
That was, yeah, if there was concerns about that, and I'm not sure if that was considered when all of these requirements were put in for the alternatives to. If there wasn't.
We just looked at, because the way the code is written right now, it simply says you have to pave, so other than paving, you can do anything you want other than paving, but you're going to have to meet the performance standards of ADA, dust, nuisance, and those types of things. So motorized or non-motorized?
Right, it would meet those standards.
Yeah, how about it? If you, if you can engineer a site that's going to meet all the performance standards, then go for it.
Right.
Yeah. So we don't, doesn't necessarily pertain to.
Tie their hands, yeah.
Yeah, whether it's going to leak oil or not, you're going to be subject to all those other laws that are in effect.
Right, okay, yeah.
So, Council or Mayor, if I may, so my, my take on this and what I'd, I'd like to do, I'm going to make a motion that we recommend approving number two and go back to the, the original version. And my reasons for this are the following, that to make a backward step in our, in our standards that we have as a city where we require pavement for RV storage, and to go backwards, I see as just a step backwards. I have done a little bit of research, what I could in the last few days, of other cities, what they require, what their RV storage looks like. I see pavement across the board in Seamy and Moore Park, in Oxnard as well, from, from what I was able to do, again, just minimal, minimal research. And again, I just, I came from a risk management conference just a couple of weeks ago, so it's very fresh in my mind, and the ADA potential liability being on the highway, and not just ADA, but also, again, we have another storage, RV storage facility that, you know, could request this modification as well, and we could have two situations where at the entrance of the city, we have, you know, we have gravel, asphalt as we enter. And I think that part of what Brian presented to us in the last few weeks, a couple of times, was what do we as a council want to do regarding our corridor, and how do we want to see it happen as we enter into the city? So I appreciate that staff has this really good comparison, that they included the second ordinance as well. And again, I know I listened in at the last meeting, and I maybe also was just not quite the sharpest during the conversations that were held, and we were talking about this, but that's, that's my take on it, so I just wanted to share.
Okay, before we get into talking about our opinions on this right now, what I want to do, this, when, when the presentation was concluded by staff, it came to council to throw questions back to staff, and that's what we should be doing now.
Okay.
In addition to that, because we do have a speaker request on this issue, so I appreciate the comments, but let's hold comments until after we are through with our questions to staff, and after we have our public speaker, and then we'll come back and we'll talk about a motion.
I understand, my apologies on that.
That's okay, no, no problem. So any other questions for staff? Okay, then I'm going to call up our speaker for this matter, John Meadows.
Today, we turned in our plan for down in the MPD zone. I was able to spend a little bit of time with Kevin, and we have a plan that we think fits and suits everybody very well. So thank you guys for allowing us this opportunity. Dave, Kevin, and Brian, they've all worked very hard to accommodate us, and, you know, the, the people of the, folks of the community who we serve in, in our business. Couple of points on your gravel issue while I'm here. For 11 years, I've been mostly on gravel, not a single incident, but we're very hands-on with the yard. Brian is absolutely right, it is a full-time job. I've actually built a drag that I use behind a piece of equipment, and we drag that and we groom our yards. So there is absolutely a way to do it. Asphalt's great, but what asphalt's going to do, in maybe our case, is quadruple our tenants' rates. That puts us out of business, unfortunately. tenants' rates. That puts us out of business, unfortunately. It's just a sad truth. Some of our tenants, customers in the yard have significant payments on their RVs, and to, you know, charge on top of that, you know, might be a deal-breaker. We've already seen some of it from COVID, from them selling motorhomes and RVs, which I hate, because it's great for the young people to go out and be in nature, be outside. The other point I want to bring up is national parks are mostly dirt and gravel, so something else to consider. I think there's a place for both, I really do. We're just asking you guys to consider it. Mayor Proteam Garola brought up a good point in the last meeting about offending drippers or motor-driven, being parked on pavement, super idea, I supported 100%. Think it's great. But towables, fifth wheels, bumper poles, things of that nature, tent trailers, things like that, what's it going to hurt them to park on gravel and be stored on gravel? Most of the time, I close my yard and rains, change my combinations so there's limited access, just for muddy reasons. Doesn't get muddy, it drains very, very, very well, our percolation tests. These guys are going to be going over with what we've turned in for out there. But I'd love to see an eco-friendly, let's stop doing so much pavement. It's kind of where I'm going, you know, there's all kinds of really cool grid things that you can put in, and then fill it with rock, and it's a hard surface, and it can be rolled and compacted. It's pretty cool. There's some really unique stuff, you know, that we could try. Doesn't mean it's right, but we could at least try. That's all I'm saying. But thank you guys for all of this, this is real important. Last meeting, Don Duncan brought up, seek some, some help, seek some outside people in the industry. I'll offer my services to any of you in here, free of charge, on anything, and I'll hear you out and, and talk to you about it. I have an open-door policy at my office at 190 East Telegraph Road. Call me, and staff has my number. I am more than happy to, you know, talk to you guys anytime, anytime at all regarding this. I don't know it all, I can tell you what not to do, but I can't tell you what to do, but I can tell you what not to do, because I've tried it. So, you know, that's free, it's at your fingertips, and I welcome you to any questions, I'll entertain anything. But we have turned the plan in, we hope you guys like it, and ready to move forward, we're excited. We, we think it's, it's going to be healthy for the community, and we haven't had any issues out there, so knock on wood, we'll continue on a safe, healthy path for everybody. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it, y'all, thank you.
Okay, now, I'm going back to council for discussion amongst ourselves here, of course, shared with the public, and a motion. Anybody's ready? Do we need to iron out the details on the, no pun intended, on the pavement issue? Are we clear on that?
Yeah, I think the, the alternatives that staff presented are better than my recommendations, I think, especially when considering the, the other regulatory bodies out there, and the regulations that do exist. And if somebody's going to present a plan, the city ought not hold them to an unreasonable standard and present options that if they don't, if they don't appear to meet those standards, would be denied. So it just, it pains me to think that we would do it just for aesthetics, especially considering that any external perimeter would be blocked from public view anyway on the lot. So any of the other potential issues of dust, drainage, or anything that, that actually exits the perimeter, whether it be up in the air or outside, that, that can be addressed, should it happen, but hopefully it's already addressed in the plan. And it also creates a lot more flexibility for the future of the property, should it ever not, not be storage. It's a lot, takes a lot to put in pavement, takes a lot to tear it out, too.
Anyone else? Do we have a motion on this, then?
Okay, I'll, I'll repeat the motion that I made, which is that city council requests to approve ordinance number 24, number two, approve ordinance 24-9726, and the version of the ordinance presented to the city council in the agenda packet on May 14, 2000, sorry, yes, May 14, 2024.
You have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, I think I need to read the title of this ordinance?
I think it's already been read.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry?
The motion is to change the version from what was introduced last meeting, so even though it's the same title, we should read it again for the record?
To read the, the ordinance from last week?
Well, because she's, her motion.
Her motion is to reinstate the.
To do first reading of the prior version?
Yeah.
Wait, what, I'm sorry, what are we reinstating?
The, the version that requires the paving and prohibits them within 1,000 feet of existing.
Oh, okay, okay. Gotcha.
So my, the, I move, my motion is that we, city council, a first reading of ordinance number 24-972, zoning ordinance amendment number 23-02, and ordinance of the city council of the city of Fillmore, California, amending sections 6.04.0410, 6.04.0415, 6.04.0810, 6.04.0815, and 6.04.96 of the Fillmore Municipal Code to clarify existing requirements and establish new regulatory requirements for self-storage and recreational vehicle storage facilities in the city, and finding of exemption, obsequia exemption.
Okay, have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Okay. Opposed by Mayor Proteam Garola, motion carries, and we will move on. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to item number 9D. No. Yes, 9D, adoption of resolution 24-4007 approving the fiscal year 2425 annual budget for the city of Fillmore.
Good evening, council members, Mayor Brogi. I'm Deborah Cavalletto, Finance Director. Item 9D has staff recommending that the city council review and modify as appropriate the preliminary budget and approve resolution number 24-4007, adopting the FY 2425 annual budget. The preliminary budget is available for public view on the city website and at the city hall's clerk's office at city hall, and it was made available May 20, 2024. We have a PowerPoint presentation to highlight key areas of the budget. So first of all, we'd like to give an overview of the budget process. City council approves the budget development guidelines and provides a budget development schedule. Finance department projects available fund balances for the upcoming budget year. They identify, we all identify every day operational requirements of a city, reviewing funding sources to continue services and comply with budget policies, for example, the 40% of general fund reserves. We look out three, 1, 3, 5 along years, along with the general plan review for potential projects. We review new and potential legislative requirements and assess the impact of the city. We meet with department heads to review requests, meet with the budget subcommittee on the budget process, and receive feedback to implement in the budget. We present the preliminary budget to city council for approval, as we are tonight. At fiscal year-end, we evaluate the budget to see what went well and how to better the process, as also, this is a living document, enables the city to respond to issues arising, such as last year with the C Street emergency sewer repair project, sewer line disaster of March 2023, that was not partial, a portion, a small portion was in the budget, did not have the full appropriations, but was later on added as an adjustment to the budget. For the 2024-25 city objectives, that includes to open the Pole Creek Bike Path at Bridges subdivision, we complete the Public Safety Citizens Academy, both in English and Spanish, to connect and strengthen relationships with our community, work with business orders, business owners, and promote the use of technology to help improve public safety, have the new fire academy for reserve firefighters, and hire the vacant public works director, planning technician, and fiscal assistant positions. So first, we're looking at the general fund revenue preliminary budget. The majority, approximately almost 70% of our funding, comes from taxes, excuse me. The highest is at the sales and use tax, which is approximately 23.4% of the budget, and as well as we next have the license, vehicle license fee, and then the property tax. We also receive transfers from other funds, that is what services that we provide, that is, as an allocation, as a cost allocation plan, and various others, such as grants, licenses for businesses, transit lodging, and others. For the appropriations for the general fund, we have approximately 39.8% is police and 16 fires, so approximately 50% is, 50% is related to safety. The others are associated, while being with part of the general fund, also are appropriated out to other funds for providing services as well. Other fund appropriations for the preliminary budget, we have enterprise, which is excluding right now the depreciation. We have sewer operating fund at eight, almost 8.1 million for budgeted, and water operating fund at 5.1 million. Approximately 3.1 of the sewer is associated with debt service. The special revenue, we have various services, that's the public transit, that's followed by actually, it would be HC, the gas tax for the maintenance of streets, the recreation fund that applies various things such as the adult center, TDA Article 8, this is Article, actually, 8A, this is a typo, and SB1 is transferred to support the street CIPs to do various neighborhood street and sidewalks, and also a special revenue of the American, American Service Plan, that's about, about $865,000 we're budgeting for the year. So what is the breakdown of that American Rescue Plan? The city received 3.8 million, utilized for a variety of projects. The funding was used for the building, own, city-owned building roof replacements, the city of Santa Paula, homeless shelter cost share, and community pool replastering. The remaining funds available is budgeted to the following. We have the building repairs, our GIS system, again, Santa Paula sub-respond for our second-year agreement, then the retail study, again, for downtown, park improvements, this will be looking for restrooms that we can be able to update, and also building repairs for this Boys and Girls Club, and then some pickleball court, updating a court. Capital improvement appropriations, we have about eight point, almost 8.8 million in capital improvements that we want to perform this year. The majority of, largest part, is the smart meter that is actually right now happening at this time, but is rolling over, will be continuing into the next fiscal year. Another is the street rehab sidewalks, there's various street riot projects that we can have, and that is, of course, if you see that funding, that's the funding coming from, I mentioned earlier, for the TDA money fund, as well as the RMRASB1 funds. We also are looking at well improvements, such as the well rehab for number five, sewer plan updates, the fire station remodel, and also water line replacements. The successor obligations for 2025 budget is almost 3.8 million. This annual budget has already been approved by the successor agency, the Board of Directors, the Ventura County Consolidated Oversight Board, and the California Department of Finance. The county's Auto Controllers Office administers the redevelopment property tax trust fund, or the RPTTF, if you ever hear that, that's what it's for, and distributes revenue to meet the obligations. Again, for the, again, for the successor agency, there's obligations for outstanding debt that when it was not, when it was active. And so most of it is pretty long, it's to 3.7 million, almost 3.7 million for debt service. And this goes to, again, goes to the Department of Finance, they can say yes or no, but in this case, they gave us our full amount for this year. And then, that's, well, special thanks to the budget process, the city team, which is the executive team, the city departments, and city council, also the finance team, it's not just me, we have Amri Tebe, she is our accounting supervisor, who is basically taking this process and is now tearing it down, and we're trying to work it back up to a process and model that we can utilize more effectively. And Myra Rosa, who was, will be more involved in the budget for the next year, but as you know, when you have a budget season, it doesn't mean the everyday processes are not at a standstill. So anytime we need some assistance for everyday processes, Myra's here to help. And we're hoping that both will be able to continue on really expanding our budget process. So that is my presentation, and do you have any questions?
Turn it over to council for questions of staff.
We're supposed to be loaded, but we already, we should previously say we've already met with Deborah, each one of us individually, and went through the budget. So I meant many of the questions, we won't be asking, because we've already asked them. I would like to thank Christina for all the time we put in the budget committee, and those two and you out there, thank you very much.
Yeah, no, I just, same, just wanted to ditto what, what Mark said. We did an excellent job through our budget ad hoc committees, explaining the budget, and hopefully with their one-on-ones with the other council members as well. Thank you to staff, and thank you for this presentation. You know, this is my, what, third, third budget, and I have to say that the, the breakdown in your PowerPoint here, for, not only for us, but for the community to see, is very clear and very direct, so I appreciate that, Deborah, very much.
I must say, we're getting tighter and tighter each time.
Yes, we are. We are. It's really nice to see. So thank you.
I wanted to see, thank you, Deborah, actually first, for, you know, the, the presentation. I do think the, the way the budget was presented this year versus last year and the year prior are much more reader-friendly, and especially when we consider that this is the reason, one of the major reasons why we publish this, is so the public can read and understand it. And so I do think that that was addressed very well, as compared to previous years. So, so thank you for that. One of the things that I know is important to identify with the budget is like what, what the goals are, and I wanted to just see if maybe we might make a slight adjustment to one of the, one of the goals. And it's, it's presented in different ways throughout the budget, but one of the, the common themes was affordability, housing affordability was one of them. But I wanted to make sure that we maybe even budget for, whether it be through economic development, through our ongoing connection with, with businesses in the community, to figure out where the holdups are, like where, the city processes might lead to decreased affordability, so rather, an increase in, in costs for developers. We, we see a lot of focus on specifically housing affordability, where a lot of times, the, the red tape is kind of pulled away at the lower levels, which helps speed through some processes, but a lot of times, that's not afforded to other developers, only that meet certain requirements. And so I think in general, it, it increases costs across the board. We have staff working extra hard to work things all the way up to our level, where they might not be able to handle at the lower level. But we don't necessarily know what all of those are, but maybe if we have the ability to make an adjustment, but starting with a goal to investigate through the economic development ad hoc, the root causes of some of the increased costs that the city can work out and, and develop. work out and develop through future process changes. So I think that that wouldn't necessarily deviate at all from our goals, but it would maybe more across the board, meet the goal of community affordability, and broaden it more outside of just housing affordability, but development affordability, I think, is We could talk money later, but initially, just a goal to establish that as a priority for the economic development.
Deborah, I want to say thank you for meeting with me when we met, and to your staff, you answered all my questions. You really set my mind at ease when we sat down and talked and answered my questions, and thank you for a great job. Thank you.
Okay. Yep. I do not have any speakers from the constituents on this, so I will turn it over to staff for motion.
I will move that city council reviewed and modified.
I'm ready to make one.
Just make it.
Okay, I move that city council approved Resolution Number 24 dash four zero zero seven, adopting the fiscal year 2024-25 annual budget.
I second.
That motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none? The agenda passes. Thank you very much. Okay, so that concludes that portion of our agenda. We are moving on to item number ten, committee, commission, and board reports. And this is a time where council can share committees, boards that they sit on, like BCTC, if they've been to meetings, like myself, any other items that council members want to share with regard to committees and commissions and...
All right, go.
Yeah.
So, we finally had a Ventura County Animal Services meeting. Our first one in what, Erica, a year?
Six months.
Six months, and there wasn't much to update, except that the Ventura County Animal Services is going to build a new shelter. We don't know where at this point. The Board of Supervisors has put ten million dollars into it and one point five million into, coming from the state. So we have eleven point five million, it's in design process, they're looking for the site where they're going to put the new shelter. We also...
Can I ask, are they looking to purchase land, or?
They're just looking at land right now. They don't even, at first turn, I thought it was Oxnard, that's what we had heard, but then she checked on it, and it wasn't Oxnard, so I don't know where it's going to be at this point. I don't know whether they're going to invest it all into the new animal, the existing animal services and expand that, or what they're going to do. But this is something the board's working on. Also, the director has resigned, Jackie Rose, she resigned, I think, of last Friday, and they've advertised a position, they got a hundred applicants, they've narrowed it down to five, and they'll be interviewing them over the next several weeks and come up with a new director. But that's about, that's about it.
Okay. Any other reports from anybody?
I did attend Saturday before last, well, that was a very busy Saturday, by the way, that was the day we had the Rotary, had a 5K, 10K run, we had over two hundred runners that attended, participated, and some of us in this room participated.
I thought you were the one.
Talking to Mr. McSweeney over there.
No, Kevin, again?
No.
You watched?
You watched? Okay. You were there.
You're just as good as me.
And then, in addition to that, we had the healthcare fair, which our councilwoman, Christina Villasenor, was extremely instrumental in, and a huge success. And then, we also had in town our State Assemblyman, Steve Bennett, was here at the Active Adult Center, and I participated in that, it was just an open forum for the public, they invited the public to come in, and he was very well received, and he spoke a lot about just things that were pertinent to Fillmore and Piru. And it was just interesting to have him here, it was the first time that I'm aware of that he's ever been here. I appreciated it, that he was here, and he shared some directions and things that are important to him, and made it extremely clear that he was there to assist the community in any way that he could. So, I made a note of that, and I'm going to be, you know, set in an appointment. So, anyway, and that's my report. Anybody else?
Claire, for Tim, you want to give an update on the, or?
Sure, yeah. So, as part of the Economic Development Ad hoc, we've been meeting with local business owners in downtown and trying to bring in some from out of the downtown area, so a little bit more on the highway as well, to work through some of the strategies prepared for us by retail strategies as contracted. And so, we're kind of on a, about a two-week, every other week rhythm to develop and implement some plans to kind of jumpstart some of the business community, especially after the dissolution of FAB, the Fillmore Association of Businesses, which followed the dissolution of the Fillmore Chamber of Commerce. So, we're without a formal business community in town, and so we're trying to work with them to kind of chart a path forward and make sure that the relationship between the city and businesses improves.
Okay. All right. Just moving on to number eleven, city manager, his report.
Thank you, we're just a couple items. So I had the shade structures, we're still in plan check. Once we get those back, we're anticipating by the end of this week. Once we get that back, the company submits their bonds, so we'll get the go-ahead to start installing these shade structures at the various parks. The dog park, we're down to three items that must be done first. We should have the water fountain installed later this week, the bench installed later this week, and then we're bringing in our AVA experts to take a look at the park, walk it, take a look at it, to make sure that everything that has been done is AVA compliant. Once that is done and signed up, we'll bring it back for acceptance to city council, and we're hoping to do it by the June eleventh meeting if possible. You may recall, Rio Vista Park had to go through a number of revisions due to our inspections out there, so we're going to be doing that as well out here for this dog park. And finally, to the public, thank you again to Deborah, Amri, and to Myra for doing the budget, working together with city council, thank you for your guidance and leadership in getting this done again, and to the public, this has been a long process for us here for the past, you know, twelve years, working together, getting this budget to a good point, to where we're very comfortable and be able to do some things for the community and putting some work into the parks moving forward. So again, thank you for your leadership over the years. And that's all.
Great. Okay. That moves us into our closed session. We will recess to go to closed session once we conclude. We have three items on closed session, we have a labor negotiation, another matter pertaining to anticipated litigation, and then also performance evaluation to do. So, once we conclude closed session, we will be back down to conclude our meeting. But those of you who are with us now still, thank you so much, and we will be back. Thank you.[1122.83]
Council is back from our closed session. We have been updated by our city attorney. We have no reportable actions. So we are going to now adjourn our meeting until our next city council meeting, which is on June 11th at 6:30 right here in City Hall. Thank you.